It is six o'clock. I'd like to call this city council work session to order. Laura, would you please begin your presentation?
Yes, thank you. Thank you all for being here this evening. I think Mayor Flora and did you say councilmember?
Do we generally call roll for this?
Not for this.
Thank you.
Because we don't take any formal minutes at a work session. We'll just have the recording available. So, thank you. We've got several diverse topics that we wanted to cover this evening, and I think maybe this is the most, covers the widest gamut of issues that I've ever had the opportunity to bring forward at one time in an agenda. But so if we, first slide, if you would please, Justin. Tonight, we wanted to just talk about sort of regulations related to camping on public property, serving unhoused populations. We weren't quite sure how to caption or title all of this. But we really wanted to just sort of talk about, I think as many of you know, we've seen kind of increasing visibility, particularly in the last couple of years of the unhoused, some unhoused residents here in our community, and that's generated questions from residents, questions and concerns for businesses. And so we wanted to really just kind of frame that issue, think about what your consensus or your thoughts were about how we want to address that in moving forward. So next, and then, I'm sorry, go back. Then we'll talk about police compensation issues and then discussion of the Johnson Drive reconstruction project. So, thank you. So just wanted to kind of recap. I know we had a presentation last year about kind of the state of homelessness in Johnson County. United Community Services each year has done a point in time count typically in January that really looks at just that snapshot on one night of where people are and what their situation is. And this is just one page of several. And if anybody is, this is available on the UCS website. I can also hand these out or email them and make them available. But I just wanted to highlight this a little bit because this year, or last year in 2024, UCS also did a point in time count in October. So that is not something they had typically done, but they wanted to really look at what does that snapshot look like in January, cold winter month, when the cold weather shelters are open versus October, milder weather, cold weather shelters are not open. So you can kind of see that between January 24th and October 2nd, the total number of homeless individuals accounted for in that point in time count really didn't change. 250 in January, 244 in October. Interestingly enough, what was really dramatically different is if you look at the January, you know, where people were. So in January, 10 and a half percent were in transitional housing, 23% were unsheltered, and 66 and a half percent were in a shelter of some type. Those numbers changed transitional, those in transitional housing stayed about the same, went to 11% in October. The unsheltered count went to 43% as opposed to the 23%. And shelters dropped from 66 and a half to 46%. Again, cold weather shelters weren't open. But so I think it just more than anything, and I'm certainly not the expert on this, but increase illustrates sort of what's happening with movement of that population in our county. So that really was an 87% increase in those identified as unsheltered in that October point in time count. And so they haven't, I haven't been able to find the 2025 numbers, but when we have that, we can share that as well. Also, we know that the county proposal that we all heard last fall to look at creating a service center, housing center at I-35 and 95th Street in Lenexa was not ultimately approved. And so the county sort of is retreated and is continuing to explore other options on how to serve that population. But you may recall that that had a limited number of beds that could be available. So next slide, please. So what is happening in Mission and why are we talking about it now? So I think, as I mentioned, I think unhoused individuals in our community have become more visible over the last few years, both on public and private property in our parks. We've had calls with people in dumpster enclosures, laundry rooms of apartment complexes, highway underpasses, just really a number of different spots. Why do we think that is? We think a lot of the same things that we intentionally invest in for our residents, easy transit access, creating a safe community, access to public restrooms, walkable access to a variety of goods and services, access to warming and cooling shelters have helped to sort of draw some of those populations here. In 2023 and 2024, the police department responded to 98 calls when the chief queries in the reports for terms like homeless or unhoused. So that's approximately one call or one response per week over that two-year time period. But 66 of those 98 calls were related to one individual. And so the photos that are included on this slide, the one on the left-hand side is kind of an encampment that we discovered in the summer of '24. Kind of up the hill on Fox Ridge across from wind tracks. Wasn't particularly visible, particularly when leaves were on the trees. And then the photo with the snow is kind of the existing shelter that's over just near Johnson Drive and the Metcalf Bridge and overpass. That individual has spent quite a bit of time there, but as the cold weather approached this year, sort of created and built out more of a structure than what we had seen in the past. Next slide, please. So we really wanted to just sort of then categorize, and I started as I was working on this PowerPoint presentation to say, okay, these are the concerns that we hear from residents or citizens. These are the concerns that we hear from businesses. These, and then I realized that they're all really interrelated and there's a lot of overlap. So I just wanted to sort of present them. I think we're all familiar with those, but we've had residents or patrons in businesses who have expressed feelings of feeling unsafe or uncomfortable. People being approached as they were walking on the Rock Creek Trail and solicited for money. It may create issues with trash or debris or just kind of unsightly or unsanitary conditions. Concern that the numbers may continue to increase and become more visible throughout the community. We hear concern for impacts on property values. But we also have many in the community who want to assist in providing food, money, or other assistance. Also, the unhoused residents are often patrons and customers in our local businesses. And we've discovered that as we've had calls from private property owners who did not want to trespass an individual because of the fact that they were patronizing businesses. You all, we hear staff or hear complaints from residents and business owners. We really have a commitment to treat our residents with dignity and respect regardless of your housing situation. I didn't include it here, but the police department's policy on interaction with kind of the unhoused population absolutely underscores a philosophy and approach that does not treat this as a crime and a criminal offense. And I think that is, I think that's important. I think that aligns with the values that we've heard you espouse. But at the same time, the current systems and structures that we have do not really provide meaningful support to balance all the needs. And I think as we listened to that presentation from UCS last year, we talked too about kind of that segment of the unhoused population who are not interested in shelters, other services that might be provided. This is the choice that they've made for a variety of reasons. So next slide, what are we doing? So we continually offer access to services both through the police department and our mental health co-responder. Even on sort of the multiple trips and visits that we have with the same individuals time and time again, we're offering those services. We've had suggestions and suggested that perhaps they move to relocate to less visible areas. Those don't seem to exist in our community because as folks have moved around on their own or as we've looked at that, it seems to generate the same concerns and complaints from surrounding neighbors, whether that be business owners or property owners. If an unhoused individual is on private property, that private property owner may call the police department and they can be trespassed. We will then typically go and assist that individual in relocating from that property. It's not a situation where we go in and issue a citation and arrest them. We have had a few arrests, but that's generally related to outstanding warrants in other communities or repeat folks who have been trespassed from private property and continue to return there. And we do, as I mentioned, offer the community center as a warming and a cooling center. So anytime the temperatures are 40 degrees or lower or 90 degrees or higher, any individual may come into the facility at no charge. The lounge area, as we all know, is sort of much smaller in size, and so that is, that's the area that's available as a part of that. And so we've had to do some training and sort of coaching with our entry desk staff at the community center and patrons just to be able to sort of know how to react and respond to that situation. The chief has designated a specific officer in the department as a liaison, so the primary point of contact. You'll often hear that police departments may not be the best first point of contact, but I would contend that in our, I don't know who else we would send in our community. So we have an officer and officers who respond that are very compassionate and understand the policies. And then we continue to explore what others are doing, both in the Casey Metro and across the country. Next slide. Yeah, absolutely.
So what services are we offering?
I don't, Chief, you can speak to that.
So our officers always have a community resource card with them that has all the available resources for individuals throughout the county. In addition, the coresponders have a much wider array of resources that they can tap into. The issue we found is that, you know, the people that we're dealing with are the ones that just don't want resources. They're choosing to live this way and they won't change. And there are often mental health components to it, but nothing that meets any criteria for being a danger to themselves or others. So that's what's making it a challenge for us.
I think I shared.
A couple things. Number one, do we have any children that we're aware of that are in these projects? Because there's a truancy law too, that they have to go to school. So I wondered where we are with any children that are.
No, we, for the few people that we have kind of are known to us that we get calls about, those are all adults.
And secondly, the one individual, is that in one of the two pictures? Both word three. Okay, thanks.
And again, that individual has been at a variety of locations and has a preference for being, you know this better than I do, within walking distance of Johnson Drive in order to patronize the businesses. So.
One more quick question. If they come into the, if somebody comes into the community center and they have a heart attack, what liability is there on the city or the community center to get the person, how do they transport, what?
We would do whatever we would do for any patron. So that would be a 911 call and we would respond, just the same as if that individual had a heart attack on the sidewalk or a bus stop or any place like that. So there's been, you know, there's been some conversation, and I shared with you two emails earlier today, if you haven't had a chance to take a look at them, from two of the businesses that are west of Big Biscuit there on Johnson Drive and who have in the last year in particular, been immediately adjacent to, you know, what has become sort of a permanent location or home. So we have been monitoring, I think we've talked a little bit really around the edges in some of our other meetings in the last year or so about Supreme Court case coming out of Grants Pass, Oregon, relating to the ability to regulate camping on public property. Supreme Court ruled in favor of the city of Grants Pass, and the chief can speak more to this. He's done much more research on it than I have. But recently, there has been a temporary restraining order issued for the city's ordinances. And the things that I've been able to read would suggest that in large part, that's being driven by the extreme winter weather temperatures and that sort of thing. But so we wanted to at least, you know, have an opportunity to discuss that. That would be one option that we would have. It does not come without its challenges. It doesn't change. And many, I mean, what we struggle with as a staff in making a recommendation, which is why we didn't bring you a recommendation this evening, we really wanted to talk through these things is we're just moving, right? We're moving this situation around the community. So we can continue to monitor and offer assistance, create new ordinances or regulations, educate and inform residents and businesses. But we're really interested in just sort of hearing your thoughts, your ideas, your preferences for how we might really begin to respond to this situation, because I think it's risen to the level of kind of complaints and concerns that have been raised, that I think we owe the community some idea of the direction or the position that we want to take.
Any comments from the council?
I've attempted to do as much research as I can in a short amount of time on what that Supreme Court ruling was. My understanding is that while the ruling was that it can be criminalized, it's only if there are viable shelter options available that they're not taking advantage of. Is that accurate?
I think that was part of it, but that, I think that might, that also was part of a previous Supreme Court decision that is referenced in the Grants Pass case, I believe.
Okay. Because one thing that comes to mind to me is that while we may have the ability to offer those services to one or two people, looking down the road, if the problem grows, I don't know that we could continue to offer a scalable solution for shelter. So any solution that we do offer, and to be clear, I'm not really in favor of criminalizing homelessness. I don't know that it could viably offer like a shelter offering to every single person. So that was just the first thing that popped up to mind, that whatever solution we come up with, I don't think it can hinge on that, that we will have those kinds of services available to everyone who may need them.
Any others?
Yeah, I think we just have to be really careful. I mean, I do understand, you know, people not wanting to see homelessness and not wanting them to be close to their business. And I completely understand people being, you know, a little afraid not knowing when someone approaches them and asks for money or, you know, that is a very uncomfortable and scary situation. But I think that whatever we determine, we need to be very careful in how that's going to play out, because I don't want to criminalize being homeless. I mean, that doesn't help anybody in any situation. The problem that we have is that we don't really have a whole lot of viable solutions in Johnson County. So it's kind of, we're just stuck in this space where we don't want you here, but we have nowhere for you to go. And there's a multitude of reasons why people don't want to go to shelters. So I completely understand that from having pets to just not being able to handle all of the people that are in shelters. I mean, it can be very stimulating for people who have mental health issues to be in a situation like that. They're scared too. I mean, just as we're afraid of homeless people, homeless people are afraid of other homeless people just because they're the unknown. So I, this is a really tough position to be in because it's only going to get worse. I mean, as things are going, affordable housing is not something that is available in Johnson County. It's not available in most cities, most towns. So we've really got ourselves in a situation where this is not solvable at the city level, especially for a city like Mission where we have very little space and very little resources. And we don't have anywhere for these people to go. I mean, this, I think, has to be done on a countywide or statewide, you know, in order to get the funding to do something significant. You know, it's a shame that the homeless shelter didn't come through because that was such a great plan, especially since each person got their own space. And I think that would have helped a lot of people who won't go to shelters if they knew that they were going to have their own bathroom, their own sleeping space. They close and lock the door and feel safe where they were. But until we can offer something like that, I just don't know that we're in a position to solve any of these issues. So it's kind of sad.
Councilmember Crane?
Do we know what ordinances are currently on the books in other cities in Johnson County?
Why don't you come up here? You're gonna, I think you're gonna get a slew of the next question.
So the only, the only ones that I know of are in Prairie Village, they have ordinance that regulates camping in public places. And that's really the issue here because the public place is, makes this the challenge. We've, you know, we've trespassed individuals off multiple pieces of property that they set up, you know, their living quarters in. But when they get on that public space, and even if they were in a park, we have park rules that can be enforced and things like that. It's just those uninhabited public spaces that become the issue, but.
So Prairie Village is just public spaces. It's not private?
Right. Well, they do have something that would apply to private, I believe. It's ordinance related to camping in vehicles or sleeping in vehicles. So I think that would apply to private property as well, but I'm not 100% sure on that.
But otherwise, on private property, if that owner is willing, and anybody, unhoused or not, could be trespassed if the, you know, property owner wanted.
Without an ordinance, correct?
Correct. Thank you.
Councilmember Schmidt?
This is a follow-up to that. Do we know if any other just cities in the metro have looked at regulating or designating spaces, like specific areas on public property that are designated as okay for camping, okay for parking, to live in your vehicles, anything like that?
And not that I know of. I mean, I think the only place that, and I don't even know if it's officially sanctioned or not, but it would be in Lawrence. They have, they have an area that a large population of unhoused people tend to reside at.
I think they actually specifically created that encampment or.
That's what I'm wondering is if it's, since we do have some county services to offer, since we do have a dedicated officer here, you know, is it easier to communicate those offerings and work with the unhoused population if there's a safe space dedicated for them to be in? Yeah.
I want to make sure everything we're clear. We do, when we run into people that will, that we offer services to that accept it, we do everything we can to get them there. I mean, we've taken people to City Union Mission, other shelters in Kansas City. I wouldn't say regularly, but enough to where it's known that we do that and we offer those services. I mean, truth be told, we probably had officers, I know for sure we've had officers pay money out of their own pocket for people to have a hotel room for a night or two. So so we have all those. And this is, you know, what, like I said, what makes this issue the most challenging is the people that are, that don't want services, they're refusing services. But we have, and I was doing an interview with somebody for a school project and they asked me what was the most challenging part about being chief of police? And I said, social issues. Because, you know, you're torn in both directions where you have, then, you know, the people that complain about this compared to the people that don't have the means or the faculties to make those decisions to choose to go to a shelter. So that's, it's a really hard situation for us as well.
Is that Councilmember Reherd and then Fladen?
You know, I mean, specifically, obviously, these business owners or even, you know, just people patronizing Johnson Drive, have we had any actual like threats, like danger, anything like that? Or is this like merely like a presence kind of issue more so than any of that?
The one that's most visible along Johnson Drive, we haven't had anything other than just kind of fear. You know, there's, there's been, the person that regularly goes into laundry rooms of apartment complexes is a little confrontational with officers at times, but we haven't, we haven't had to use force or anything with him.
And I do know that one of the emails that was forwarded today referenced some vandalism, and I didn't have a chance between when that came in and the meeting to visit with the chief. That's the first I had heard of that, so I don't know.
I don't believe that was the current resident. I believe that was when, that was before, as they were transforming Big Biscuit from Don Chalito's.
Oh, that's right.
Councilmember Leaden?
So if we do come up with an ordinance, how are we going to enforce it without it being like criminal offense? I mean, what are, what are our options in terms of enforcing a public camping ordinance?
I mean, I think, I think one option would be to make it a civil offense instead of a criminal offense. You've seen a lot of cities do with, with other, other social issue type things. It's a civil penalty. And so that would be one option that could be explored. I don't know if any of that is in Kansas, so I don't know if that's, I have to check with all the attorneys for that.
So what would that look like? It was a criminal as opposed to civil? What would be the main difference?
I believe the main difference would be that it would, it would probably, I'm guessing that it would come with a trespass so that there would be a civil fine, could be a civil fine of, you know, up to X number of dollars that could be paid. Or, you know, if they, if they vacated the area, that may be dismissed or not, not, I mean, a fined homeless person is, it's kind of like when we're talking about writing somebody for not paying their property taxes on their vehicle, it just creates another vicious cycle where they then can't afford to pay their property taxes. Just so, to something that maybe wouldn't turn into a criminal warrant.
So if they didn't pay the civil fine, does it then escalate?
Yeah, that's, and those are the questions that I'm not sure of, because if it's a civil fine, I don't know how you would issue a criminal warrant on a civil, civil fine. So, and that might be what we want to avoid.
Yeah, I think that generally is the dividing line, is that you wouldn't face a criminal warrant for a civil offense. You have an outstanding judgment for somebody to collect if they bothered to. In that case, I guess us.
So then is that really enforcement?
Right.
You know?
Yeah, I mean, there's a lot of things that we would have to explore once, once we kind of get to know what, what, what you're all's feelings about it is and what avenues you'd like us to explore.
Is that Councilmember Carpenter Davis?
Yeah, just a question, Chief. You know, a lot of the children, well, not children, the students that go to the high school go right past that area on Johnson Drive. Has there been any complaints from parents or anything about interaction between that individual and the students?
No, I mean, he generally keeps to himself for the most part. I think there's a set of people that come around and help him and but, you know, I've never seen him, you know, out. but he, you know, you, I've, I've never seen him, you know, out panhandling or anything like that. I think he just keeps to himself. Even when our, our officers check on him regularly, he just yells from his tarp and says he's fine and because he doesn't want, especially when it's cold, he doesn't want to let cold air in. So, but, and, and, you know, I have had that conversation with our correspondent about, well, you know, when we face those brutally cold stretches. You know, whether or not that in and of itself constitutes a danger to himself. And so those situations, we make contact with them, make sure that he has adequate, make sure he has knowledge of, of the weather, make sure he has adequate, you know, clothing and make sure that he's, he's prepared and knows the risks. And, and in talking to the correspondent, if all those things exist, then, then there, then it doesn't fall under, under those dangers to himself.
Yeah. One last question I have is the warming centers, I know is that Palace Center predominantly. Is that, you know, like last week when it was so bitter cold, is that open 24/7 then as a warming center?
No, it's just open during the hours that, that the center would typically be open. We don't staff it beyond that.
Thank you.
I think the only other factor that, that might come into play to this, and it's, it's more anecdotal, is as we approach World Cup, there's kind of some anecdotal evidence or stories going around about, uh, previous sites that have had that. Um, where, uh, depending on what countries you get to be playing matches here, you know, they have followings that will come. And, and, you know, they will, they, they could potentially, and have set up camps in, in areas around, around their teams, wherever they're playing. So with our, with our access to transit, it might be something that we might need to think about for that period of time as well.
Uh, and, and I don't know, you know, if we typically think about the larger green spaces we might have, we do, as the chief mentioned, have park rules and regulate, I mean, we have park hours, right? So right now, i- if you aren't allowed to be in a park past 10:00 PM uh, of an evening. So we could certainly enforce from that perspective. Um, we have had questions, uh, you know, from park patrons, particularly in Broadmoor about, um, you know, questions from children or, or just, you know, feeling that, that sense of fear or concern or it really the sense of the unknown. And we've tried to explain, you know, that it is a public park and from, you know, the hours of, that it's open until it's closed. And so I know that we, for a while, were regularly patrolling and making sure we got by at 10 o'clock and made sure that any, anybody who was there had kind of moved on from the park. But we, I mean, we've encountered folks maybe two or three years ago, someone's, uh, you know, I think a mother and a child sleeping in one of the play structures. It, so it just, again, I, if we had the solution, we'd be doing a lot of things around Johnson County and, and Mission.
Councilmember Crane?
I would think a park would be the more likely place because there's restroom facilities if they're open. And I mean, I, you don't want fear throughout the community. By the same token, these people have to use a restroom, I would think. So.
Yeah. That's, I mean, that you've got these competing interests that, that tug at you. And you can understand both sides of it. And you can understand the human side and you can understand, you know, the, the business owners being, being upset, frustrated, their patrons being nervous. And, and so those are the things that probably why, why hasn't been solved to this point, I suppose.
The business owners, the people who have come forward, have they done anything thus far relative to filing anything with the police department about trespassing?
Um, well, we've received numerous, but it's not trespassing because it's public property. So that, and I mean, because they call and that's what they would like the outcome to be. It's just, we have to follow, you know, the law and our policies to make sure that we're, um, we're not doing anything that that will, will get us in trouble or face any liability. So that's, and so then, you know, you have this business owner that doesn't, doesn't like that answer, but you also have somebody that is unwilling to accept any resources.
Public versus private.
Um, well, it's all about where the location is and, and who owns the property. So, and so in these situation, the situation that we're in currently with the one on Johnson Drive, um, that and it's just outside of what is considered park. So it's, it's along kind of the embankment of, of Metcalf and Johnson Drive and, and that area. When you look at the county records is belongs to the city of Mission.
Part of the challenge too, I know that we've been exploring, you know, nuisance ordinance as, when you look at kind of the trash and the, the debris. But, um, then when you sort of complete the circle of that, that look on, in, in any other situation, who is cited for the nuisance? The property owner is cited for the nuisance. And so then we're right back into all of these other regulations and controls. Are we citing ourselves? But then how do we, how do we address that? Right? So I mean, I think we've really tried to explore and, and be creative and
Well, I think that sort of underscores it for me and I agree a, a lot with what Councilmember Loudon had to say, which is, this is this is first and foremost, a failure of, of the region and the community to provide a, a better alternative. And I think to the degree that somebody unhoused doesn't want to accept services, it's, it's likely just, they're not able to live on their own terms. You know, when they receive those services. And I, I don't think it's, it's, you know, I, I don't, I don't think it's too controversial to say that I think if you were able to, to just help somebody find their own place to live, that the vast majority, vanishingly few people would, would reject having an apartment on their own terms with no strings attached, right? So if we could just, you know, make apartments grow on trees and hand out money like it was candy, fine. It's, but I mean, therein lies the problem. We could, we could potentially do our best to, to provide housing for people until we become the city that provides housing for anybody. And then all of a sudden, it's a regional problem again. Um, I, I really feel that our only permanent recourse is to continue to, to push on the, the region and, and, and the county and, and whoever we can to, to, to provide a, a regional solution. I, I mean, otherwise I do feel like we are just moving people around either criminally or civilly or nicely or not, right? Whatever, whatever route we pick. And, and I don't, I don't feel very good about being A punitive toward anybody under any circumstances for the, for the situation, or B, just shuffling them around because we don't feel comfortable around them. So yeah, I, I would certainly be interested to, to know what other municipalities do, but I, I feel pretty at the mercy of the economic situation. Um, I, I, I think at the, at, at one extreme, at that one end of the spectrum, if you, if you sort of really criminalize homelessness and, and crack down on it, so to speak, I think what you end up doing is provide a punitive, poor quality housing in the most expensive and long-winded way possible. Um, and at the other extreme, you do nothing and, um, people have to live outdoors and you know, people around them don't like that. So I, I, I hope that we can continue working with, with partners in the region. And, you know, to be clear, when I'm sitting up here saying, let's, let's figure out a solution regionally. You know, I want people to know that if, if, if the county came to me and said, can we put a shelter in Mission, I would say yes to that. I, I don't know if there is, if that's feasible, if we have property for that, but I want to be clear that I'm not sitting up here saying, oh, Lenexa, go do this. That's your problem since you have vacant space. I'm all for putting it wherever it can be put, but um, I think the answer has to be, you know, not criminalizing and being, being punitive to people that are already in a, in a difficult situation. But finding a way to get them what they need on their terms so that they don't feel like they have to hide or, or avoid services or, or, you know, not take advantage of the things that are out there since they're not maybe compatible with, with their life, pets, situation, mental health, whatever it is.
I think that criminalizing it just takes the whole people. I mean, you're just continuing to like put fines on someone who already can't pay those. So I think it's only creating a bigger issue. Yeah. I mean, I totally agree. I think if we pass something here, they'll just move to Marion or they'll move, you know, somewhere else and that's not solving the solution. So.
I mean, and I think it goes the other way. If we say you can camp out on city hall lawn and, you know, it gets out that that's perfectly fine. That's where, that's what everybody's gonna do. They're gonna come where it's allowed. So, I mean, I, I really feel like acting on our own here is a no win situation.
Councilmember Crane?
What, what are we talking to the businesses about? Like, you know, I have a concern for them. Economically, things are really out of control right now. They're not getting as much business. I, you know, I have a feeling for this property owners and the business owners too. So that's a, that's a balancing act for the city. Where does the city fall in terms of responding back to the businesses?
We, I mean, we communicate with them and tell them, you know, kind of the things that we're telling you that we have, we have restraints that, that keep us from just going in and removing somebody from, from a piece of property that doesn't belong, that belonged to the public. Um, and, and for a long time, we were waiting for that Supreme Court decision just to see where, where, where that would land. So we knew whether or not we could, any considerations could even be had. And so, but, but, you know, they're, they're frustrated, you know, you know, the, the chiropractor that provided some testimony, um, you know, he, he has patients. I spoke with him at length. He has patients that, uh, you know, that come and, and say, you know, should I be afraid? You know, do, you know, this isn't. And so, you know, he's worried that he's gonna lose his, his clients and, um, you know, they're gonna go to a different, a different provider. Um, which, you know, you understand that. You, you understand, like, it's, it's the push and pull for this is, uh, is a huge challenge.
I mean, when you look at, at, at what other countries, what other communities have done, I mean, it seems the most effective is to offer no strings attached housing, meaning if you want to consider using, you continue to use. If you want to bring your pets, you bring your pets. If you want to have your boyfriend live with you, you have your boyfriend. But giving them like their own space, whether it be a pallet situation or a room in a, in, in a hotel-like situation. But I don't know that we've got the space or, you know, we don't have that space to make a little pallet city or to renovate a hotel into one of those situations. So it just seems to me like our hands are tied. We can't necessarily do the thing that needs to be done to actually help homeless people by giving them somewhere safe and warm and, and somewhat comfortable to live, those little camp trailers. But at the same time, you know, again, this is kind of bigger than us. And, and I, I do think that, that you know, an ordinance for public property is, it's probably time to do that. Um, I just am very concerned about enforcement and, and, uh, you know, what that looks like. But absolutely, I don't want Mission businesses to lose business because you know, their, their patrons are afraid. That's the last thing we want. We, we don't want to take prosperity away from anybody who's, who's, who's having you know, who's successful in what they're doing. Um, I just want to make sure that we hold on to our, you know, humanity here as we work through this issue. And I, I trust because I know that we all feel the same about that. And I know that, that, um, you know, those with the city do as well, uh, which, which makes me a little bit more comfortable when talking about these issues. But I just wish we could, you know, have an acre or so of land that we could, you know, tiny house. Uh, because we've seen that happen in our own, you know, Kansas City community. Those, those veterans, tiny houses are, are absolutely astoundingly successful in the work that they're doing, um, and spreading all over America, which makes me very happy. Um, I don't know if you know, but you know, that's a hometown boy right here for Mission doing that work. Yeah. And, and that's a wonderful, uh, you know, model. I wish that, that we had the space and the funds to do something like that here, but just wanted to be on record saying that.
Do you know at this point, if any of the churches within the Mission community are, offer any space or anything during cold times? Do we know?
Um, I'm not sure about, I don't think any of them offer any overnight or any, you know, uh, you know, more permanent. I would imagine that most of our faith-based community would allow people to come in and, and stay warm if they didn't know that about the other area shelters and libraries that they could go to.
Any final thoughts? Otherwise, okay. Thanks, Chief.
Okay. Like I said, interesting, interesting topics this evening and challenging topics. Next, uh, what we wanted to do is sort of come to talk to you, uh, set the table a little bit. I think it's uh, a situation that we're all familiar with, but we really wanted to create some context, uh, around the situation that we find ourselves in at this point in time related to, uh, police department compensation. Uh, you know, why we, why we're here and why we think it's important to think about doing, doing something. I just wanted to include kind of the organizational chart here. I think you all have seen it, uh, you know, before. But if we look at kind of our police department by the numbers, we have 29 commissioned officers. I've been here next month, 20 years. That number has remained static, at least in the time that I've been here. And I think we've tried to dig up how long ago that was. I think it probably increased with, when we brought investigations in-house. Uh, but it, we've been relatively stable in terms of the number of commissioned, uh, officers that we've had for many, 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 many years. Prior to 2020, I think department turnover was trending, usually trended about 5% annually. Uh, we, that, that's the largest department, so we had the highest turnover rates there often. Um, and again, n- not uncommon because we are a smaller agency. We don't have a lot of opportunity for advancement. We don't have a lot of the specialties, K nine, uh, tactical units, some of those kinds of things that people are very interested in. And so it wasn't uncommon for us to have someone come in and, and maybe transition to another agency at that five to seven year mark. Between January of 2020 and January of 2025, we had 13 officers who left our department for positions in other law enforcement agencies. Six of those happened in 2023. You heard us talk about, you know, organization-wide in 2023, we had the highest turnover, I think we've had uh, perhaps ever. And so those are just the ones who left for other agencies. There were some who left uh, for other, other reasons, but those numbers aren't, don't seem to be slowing down dramatically. Um, and so we really feel like we've got to figure out how to come up with something that uh, will help us address this situation. When we look at in 2020, in our 2025 budget, the total police personnel uh, line items, which includes base wages, overtime, benefits, KPNF retirement, uh, are budgeted at $4.2 million, which represents about 44% of our total citywide personnel costs. So it's a big piece of, of the pie in our general fund and it's always going to be. Um, so we have to again, be very thoughtful as we think about recommendations. So we wanted to talk just a little bit about the what and the why. The law enforcement shortage is not new, as I mentioned, but I think we saw that it, it become a bigger issue, really beginning in 2020, both with the pandemic, COVID-19 pandemic and kind of the, the nationwide anti-police protests that a- arose after the murder of George Floyd in Minneapolis. The recruitment challenges that we all have have resulted in surrounding agencies of all sizes sort of in, increasing pay and frequently offering hiring bonuses to either retain the folks that they have uh, or to attract, um, uh, qualified individuals. So we have the pipeline of individuals coming in interested in the law enforcement profession is smaller than what it may have historically been. And then again, there's this increased competition for those once you get them in and trained. I think we all recognize that the council has made significant investments in the past, not only in compensation for the police personnel, but really for employees throughout the organization. But at this point in time, the market data and our real-time experiences in terms of turnover suggests that we are lagging again, particularly with respect to police salaries. One of the things that exacerbates that is it's already a long recruitment and training period. So the amount of testing, uh, whether that's physical, psychological background, whatever else happens, medical, all of those things. It's a long process. And then it, as if. And then, as if we bring in people, which we tend to do, who have not yet been through the academy and are not certified yet, that training period can extend up to nine, is it six to nine months before we actually have them out on the street performing individually. And so, there's some departments who are willing to sort of compromise their standards and either accept folks that they might not have in the past. But one of the things I'm proudest about in our department is that we have really been unwilling to compromise those standards and, and our culture simply to fill the vacant positions that we have. I mean, the challenges then that we have in hiring and retaining employees and having positions vacant for longer periods of time can create stress for the current officers that we have. So, there's required overtime to ensure we can meet staffing minimums. We've transitioned to 12-hour shifts, which are difficult from a personal work-life balance standpoint. Oftentimes, we have folks who are unable to take vacation or holidays. And so, it, that, we really look at the mental health of the folks who are here as well as trying to fill those vacancies. And so, it's, it's the people that are leaving for other positions potentially, but then you also have just the regular who's on paternity leave. We've, I don't know how many, we've welcomed a lot of new additions in the police department in the last several years. And the council's been very generous with, you know, caregiver leave and, and parental leave. And I think that's an incredible benefit for folks, but, or you have someone who has a medical issue. And so, you're not able, while we may have that position filled, we don't have that position available at, at any particular point in time to put out on the street. One thing I really cannot stress enough is that we have a core of absolutely committed professionals who appreciate the culture of the department and the community that they are here to protect and serve. And in conversations, they underscore and articulate repeatedly that the factors that work against our department are competitive pay and our facility. And I think that comes as no surprise to any of you sitting there or any of us. So, we really have to, I think, be diligent in finding sustainable and practical solutions that we can implement that allow the department to maintain its high standards and level of service. So, the how and the when. We obviously are not here in front of you this evening with a very specific recommendation, but we have created a department working group in the past and probably wasn't the best approach. The chief and I have put our heads together and brought forward solutions or we've worked with our compensation consultants. But it was really important to us at this point in time to create a working group of members of the department to be a part of this, to have those voices represented. And so, we've got a group of folks with a variety of experience, some who've worked in other agencies, some whose only law enforcement experience is here, different ranks, positions in the department to really help us think through the process and the recommendations. The, the, both the initial and the ongoing financial implications are going to be significant to get us to where we need to be. But I think we have to figure out how to make meaningful progress in the next 45 to 60 days and then have a plan for that long-term sustainability and viability outlined as well. We have to be, I think, also as we look at these long-term plans, we have to be cognizant of the tenure of the current command staff. The chief reminded me today, he is the youngest of the members of the command staff. And so, as we think about this, we need to be thinking about succession planning. If we have a culture that is important, you know, and, and I have listened to our officers in this, in this group say, we have the culture, this is the place to be. We just, we need to get people here to experience that, right? And then we need to be able to keep them, keep them here. Any recommendation I think that we will bring forward will be, will include a step plan. We introduced a step plan in 2021, but it lasted 18 months, I think, because we ended up having ARPA dollars that were available that allowed us to sort of push people even beyond what that step plan was. But one of the conversations that we're having with, with this group of members of the department is, okay, let's run all the traps. Let's run all the pros and cons of a step plan. If the step plan is what you want, let's think about, is, is that really true in XYZ situation? And so, we want to be able to, to make sure that whatever we bring forward as a recommendation is one that is understood, can be explained, can be supported when we bring that forward. And one of the other things that is going to be really important to explore is what other non-monetary benefits might we be able to provide? To offer our current or prospective employees. So, that's really what we have there this evening. We just wanted to sort of set the table. We'll be back in the shorter term with some recommendations and we'll look forward to presenting those. I don't know, Chief, if you have anything else you want to add?
Well, first and foremost, thank you for, for hearing this out, but I want to just reiterate that I know I may be a little biased, but we have a really good group of people protecting these streets every day and night. And they, they go above and beyond. Yeah, we're, we're an organization, human beings. Occasionally, there's an error or a mistake, but we learn and we move forward. I think one of the things I was talking to Laura about is just, you know, while this will impact, you know, a starting salary, the, kind of the, the red alert that, that I'm on is retention is more important currently than, than recruitment. We have got to maintain a level of professional, you know, experience throughout the ranks that allows us to handle calls for service that are, you know, the unusual things that, that take a while for you to experience. I mean, I'm still, I still experience things that I never thought that I'd see in this city and, in the 25 years that I've been here. So, the other thing, and, and not just the value of having that experience, but those value of them training the young people so they become the experienced officers. And, and I can't express enough, you know, this, when you're talking about the work-life balance and, and working a 12-hour shift and then, you know, are you, are you really? And there's some people that love it because you get more days off. But at the end of your 12-hour shift, you're, you're pretty much shot. And that's if you don't get a late call. That's if you don't have to get up in the middle of the day and go to court. I mean, there's all sorts of factors. And, and one of the things that's, that's really important to me is making sure that we maintain that I, it, it's like nails on a chalkboard for me to hear somebody ask to work an extra day or come in, stay six hours late or after work in a long time. They need that time away from here. They need to have a clear head, not, you know, not just for their own well-being, but so that they're coming to work with, with you know, as least amount of stress as they can. So, they're making good, sound decisions and not making mistakes because they're tired and things like that. So, I just want to reiterate that, those two. And the other thing, you know, you, you, you think about the city of Mission and its size, but when you look at calls for service data countywide, we're actually the second busiest department per officer, per call for, for calls for service. So, I mean, those, those men and women are out there 24/7 answering the call and they're getting there and they're doing it, doing it the right way. And I just want to make sure that we do every, everything we can to keep them because they're, they did, they're, they're worth it. So, thank you.
Do you, Councilmember Cring?
Do we, have we canvassed the officers to find out what kind of things they might? Reporting seems to be administrative in nature. It's probably not their favorite thing to do is keep track of everything and written down. Are there things like that that, that we've canvassed them about and what they'd like to see done differently? How, we can help?
Yeah, I mean, those things that we've, that we've taken, and we've taken a lot of that away. As far as it used to be that every shift you had to write a daily activity report and you had to fill in your, all of this stuff and account for. And really, I mean, it was, it was providing us little data other than something to refer to if, if, if somebody called, if somebody, whether it was a complaint. Well, all that data is available at, at a fingertip now. So, we've, we've eliminated them from having to do some of the administrative work. I mean, you gotta remember too, that we all are also required to keep our certifications, to have 40 hours of training. That, that's the bare minimum for us. Our, our average is well over that because training is important. And training and, and our equipment is something that is kind of our only retention thing right now. We don't, you know, we don't have a, a new station with a big gym and locker rooms and coffee machines and all that stuff that, that some of the other agencies have. So, we have to, we have to be creative in, in how we use our retention. And some of that's offering, you know, officers, opportunities for certifications to become instructors and things and, and, and other aspects of, of the job that we, that we kind of allow them to spread their wings and, and do the things that interest them.
This might sound stupid. Look, I know it may not be a whole lot to somebody, but are we using on-the-spot awards and things like that to actually garner additional, you know, people that are going out of their way? They do things above and beyond what they're doing. Are we giving them $250 at a time to do something? I mean, I know we can't do everything, but I'd love to see that on-the-spot award program re-implemented if possible because that, it's a small incentive, but it's acknowledging, not only are you important, you made such a difference, we need to pay you for it.
Yeah, then that'd be great. I mean, I know that there's probably some administrative tax and stuff, issues that we'd have to issue, look at, but, you know, yeah, I think. And we've thought about doing that, you know, having, having competitions. I mean, we're, by kind of nature, we're kind of competitive. We don't like to lose. So, and so, we've thought about doing some of that with, even with some of our vendors that, you know, maybe be able to donate some, something, you know, whether it be a pair of gloves of, you know. And it, it's hard to quantify a competition. You don't want to, you don't want to make it something that sounds like a quota. It's, it would have, it's something that, you know, we'd have to be creative about.
Councilmember Carpenter-Davis?
Yes. First off, I hope our officers recovering from her injuries and resting at home and really appreciate her service for us. You know, I've noticed, I think one, one of the things that people think often is in mission, we see our, our officers right here in mission. But I see them out on the highways as well several times. And with the, with the changes with Row Avenue right now, 18th Street, it's going to be even more for you all. The other thing, Councilmember Schmid and I, Brian, toured the police department and the locker rooms and everything. You know, that's something in itself, like you just mentioned, that another city has invested in. I'd like to see us really think about that because it's not only the camaraderie that's great here, but it should be the facilities because that honors the work of those people that run in when we run out. And I think it's, it's time, you know, one of the issues in policing, and I know this from being a dean of a police academy a long time ago, is the fact that there's more females coming into the profession. And we need to honor them as part of our police department. Yes, we're 1952, I get that, but times have changed and we're in 2025 now. We need to honor our female police too.
Yeah, I would underscore. I think all of the staff and departments in the, under this roof are used to doing more with less. And I, I think we all have an appetite to at least entertain the thoughts about space needs and, and what that's going to take. Councilmember Loudon?
So, I've, I've had the opportunity to interact with police officers. And you know, when the police come, it's usually not the best situation. But every single time that I've had an interaction with the mission police department, regardless of what the situation was, it was always professional and positive and supportive. So, I appreciate the work that, that you and, and, and your, your staff provide this city. I mean, if I were a police officer and I had to choose a spot to work in the metro area, you know, obviously I'm biased, but more than likely it would be mission as opposed to, you know, many other of, of the cities. I would, I would see this as, as being a, a good place to, to. Yes, to, to be an officer. And culture is really key. I mean, there are some similarities between what I do in the field that I'm in and what you do. There's, there's trauma every day in some way, shape or form. And so, I, I know just through conversations that you care about that aspect of the job and do a lot to support officers when they've experienced trauma. And I would, you know, like to see that very much continue, if not, you know, ramp up a wee bit because that is what makes that life balance when you can go home and leave what you've just experienced behind because you're processing it in a healthy manner. So, I, I, I commend you on that and, and want to, to support you to, to, to continue that. And I also hear what you're saying about retention. I mean, I cannot imagine how much it costs to get an officer from start to on the street in terms of money. So, we would save money in the long run if we could retain as many officers as we possibly can as opposed to having to start over again, time and time again. So, I, you know, yes, it's nice to offer new officers a, a, a nice salary, but you're right, we really need to keep up with the experienced officers that we have so that they don't feel like they need to leave. Because I'm sure they would like to stay, but you know, a, a $10,000 difference between one department to another is.
I wish it were only $10,000.
Oh, it's grown since the last time we talked.
I think, what, I mean.
Yeah, I mean, there's agencies that are starting at 65.
But there's lateral moves where we've seen people where it may be closer to 30,000 dollars. Yeah, it's.
And, and you can't, I mean, you can have the best culture and the best everything, but that doesn't put food on your family's plate.
Culture doesn't pay the bills, yeah.
And I totally agree with, with, you know, doing something about the facilities because I, I know where I work, you know, I've, I've had basement offices that didn't have any windows. And, and even though I love the work that I was doing, I did feel like I was not in a professional setting. And yours isn't quite that bad. But yes, it is nice. So, every now and again, I get invited to a big corporate office and I'm like, damn, this is how the other half of the world lives. And it does make me think, how could I get a part of this? But no. So, yeah, I, I think we should really, I mean, we've all outgrown this space for sure, probably 20, 30 years ago, right? Yeah.
Well, I'm, yeah, for my part, I think you, you're looking at a council that's prepared to, to hold the department to a high level of expectations. And really, all you give us back is nothing we can complain about. So, that's fantastic. And I think that in and of itself deserves our support. And my philosophy on this has always been, if we're going to ask a lot of these officers, then we should put a lot back into it and, in terms of anything and everything we can, facility and salary and benefits and so on. So, yeah, I, I tend to think it's, it's penny wise and pound foolish to, to, you know, lean on, you know, short staffing and lower wages and, and end up with things like mandatory overtime and, you know, a list of reasons why you might want to walk out the door, right? So, yeah, for my, I think for my money, I would, I would be willing to tighten other places in the budget to see, you know, wages across the board set at a rate that's going to retain talent and attract talent and, and make sure that we have what we need to operate and, and have good morale. I, I would rather have that than a whole host of shiny new things in the parks, but revenue streams being what they are, it is what it is. I'm, I'm proud of our parks, but we have to have good people or, or none of it really amounts to a hill of beans for me. Any other comments?
Yeah, I've just got one more. I, I think everybody kind of said what I thought. And I'll second the thought of, you know, for me, like, not for me, but for everybody, like, safety is a basic human need more so than some of the extra services that we offer. And so, I do think that if that one falls apart, we don't hear about it now because of the level of service that we do offer. But if it were to dip, I think we'd hear about it far more than we hear about any other issues. So, yeah, I absolutely would advocate for doing what we can to be competitive. Partially because of what Leah mentioned, like, it is more expensive to attract and train and then acquire a new officer than, than keep. attract and train and then acquire a new officer than than keep what we have. Also, I I look at, you know, all the apartments that we've approved and that are in development. And I'm obviously in favor of density, but more people, more problems. That's that's how that goes. And to expect the same number of staff to deal with more individuals per member without, I think, compensating for them for that is is a tough ask. So I would like to just give a thought towards as those apartment complexes come up and we start to realize some of the tax revenue from those residents, what of that can be allocated towards a new facility? I know that's longer term and we need to do something, you know, sooner, forty-five, sixty days, but just thinking about, you know, the the potential issues that that the the density does bring and and what we can do to keep the force that we have happy and ready to to deal with that extra population would be good.
Yeah, and just in case you need a unanimous support from council,
you know, I joined council at a kind of strange time where there was a lot of distrust in just police departments in general. And I have to say that you and your team have single-handedly like healed my perspective of police departments. So I'm absolutely in favor of figuring out a way that we can make this work, figuring out a way to retain people and attract people and get creative, certainly. So I'm excited to kind of hear some feedback, you know, from people on staff and yeah, so absolutely in support.
Councilmember Crane.
Dan, you and I started twenty-five years ago, and we have gone through several iterations of looking at potential spots for City Hall. We've looked at other things. Do you remember, if we have twenty-nine commissioned officers, do you remember when you started, how many officers occupied the space there?
If my memory serves me correct, it was seventeen.
So we're almost double with the same space. Yeah. Are we, Laura, are we looking at expansion or what we're going to do facility-wise?
You needed another topic for this work session, I think.
We are, and that will be part of what we bring forward. I think most of you are familiar that we've done some space needs analyses over the year. Over the last probably four years or so, we've explored really in depth some repurposing both of this building and another building north of Johnson Drive that has been for sale. And trying to come up with budgets. Also, just really in recent weeks, City of Fairway is looking to construct a new police facility as well as potentially the City of Westwood as they have combined their City Hall and Police Department as part of a redevelopment project. So I'm taking the opportunity to visit with both of those communities about their space needs. I've talked with the chief some. I can tell you that in a conversation just about a week ago, they have at least in both instances narrowed down their space needs to be somewhere in the eight to nine thousand square foot range. I believe the City of Fairway has ten officers, the City of Westwood has eight. Unfortunately, there's not a location that anybody, that either one of them are looking at. On probably the timeframe that we're looking at that could accommodate their needs and our needs in terms of square footage. So we are turning over, the mayor's been, you know, encouraging and supportive of us sort of turning over every stone and looking at those at those options. But I think we're at the point where we've got to bring you a really solid proposal to just react to. And so we will work on that as a part of of that longer term. Again, I think some of the salary adjustments in the short term. But when I talk about that long-term plan, that definitely includes the facility. I would just again, reiterate everything that that folks have said. And I know that this meeting will be available to watch. And so I hope that our officers have an opportunity to go back and watch this and hear the support because you don't always have the opportunity to interact with them in in this setting. So.
Well, it's poignant that our previous topic of discussion, I think, showcased just how professional of a force we have. And I think we all can easily imagine how differently interactions with unhoused people might go in a different department that didn't have the same values and prioritize the same thing. So that's something I think we all feel confident that we need to continue investing in.
I will also say that when you're out recruiting, this group has done an amazing job. It's not just the most talented, it's people who fit here. And there are certain fits that go and certain don't. And I think you've done an amazing job in looking at people and look at the people that you've kept all this time. Perk, I mean, you can't find Paul Mary with that New York accent. Those are, those are classic police officers for this community.
Don't, don't encourage them, please. But you know what? I think one of the things that strikes me is is that I think top to bottom in our police department is they hold one another accountable. They don't rely on someone on the command staff or supervisor. And that is, that's part of, I think, what contributes to the culture that that we have. So we'll look forward. You know, whoever said we needed money would solve the problem. First problem we were discussing, it will solve the second problem that we're discussing, but I haven't seen it grow any faster in the last thirty minutes.
Have we been playing the lottery?
That doesn't pass an audit.
Not with city dollars, how about that? Okay, our last topic this evening was just, we had an opportunity recently to share with you all kind of the the actual physical impacts and design of the Johnson Drive project from Lamar to Metcalf. We we had some individual meetings and then we had our first sort of public open house, which was on a very cold night and not particularly well attended. But following that, Councilmember Chosey in particular had reached out and just expressed some thoughts and concerns and wanting to kind of talk through. And so we wanted to create that opportunity. I think you mentioned it under your council comments at the council meeting in February, but we wanted to create that opportunity here. And so I just, I just put together a couple of slides. I want to go through the first one and then, well, maybe both of them. And then let Councilmember Chosey have an opportunity to kind of share your thoughts. I think Paul Moore with Olson, who is the designer. Stephanie Brent are here as well. But really just thinking about the history of the project, the city applied for the Service Transportation Block grant funds through Mark in twenty twenty-two and was officially awarded six million dollars towards this project in twenty twenty-three. So that call for grants and that cycle often runs three to four years in advance of when the project is actually going to be constructed. Once we knew we had the federal funds in place, we were able to really then kind of start drilling down and making and refining the numbers for our cars application, which on this project, we're estimating about one point nine million dollars in county assisted road dollars coming. And then we started talking, if you go back and look at minutes from probably the last two years, I've been a broken record saying we can't cash flow this Johnson Drive project. So we're gonna, as we get closer, think about how we're going to finance the remaining pieces. Federal dollars flow through KDOT as the administering agency. They develop a timeline and a schedule that's fairly aggressive and tight from project design through project construction. Survey work began on this project in twenty twenty-three. The design contract was awarded in April of twenty twenty-four. So between the survey and design work, it was about nine hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars. That had been expended. And then just in January of this year, we issued or awarded the contract for the appraisal and acquisition services, which also file, follow a very prescribed process when the federal dollars are involved. And we're estimating that the right-of-way and easements that will be necessary for this project total about a million dollars. It's part of why we're talking about the potential debt financing now because we can't cash flow a million dollars worth of right-of-way construction easements and move forward with the residential street reconstruction projects and keep all of those kind of wheels moving. So you'll see here, total estimated project costs are about twelve point seven million. Federal SDP funds are six cars at one point nine, leaving us, there's probably, I think, Stephanie and Brent had estimated maybe about four hundred thousand dollars in smack dollars coming into this as well. And so that's the delta that we're sort of trying to solve for and when we look at financing. So then when we step back and say, okay, what are the factors that kind of influenced the design that you all saw a couple of weeks ago? The SDP grant application criteria, but that grant submission is narrative only. And so there aren't concept or design drawings that accompany that. So there's an opportunity then to then translate those criteria into the actual project design. So we also looked at, I know, as they looked at design, current and projected traffic counts, including any potential changes to the Johnson Drive Metcalf interchange in the future. A need and a desire to create additional pedestrian crossing between rigs and Lamar. And I've gone back and reread the SDP grant application three or four times, kind of trying to pull out those pieces which were central to that application. Goal of widening sidewalks and improving ADA accessibility. A desire to mimic the several of the streetscape features in the downtown district, including decorative streetlights, trash and recycling containers, bicycle racks, benches, native plantings. And then the need to get significant utility relocations accomplished ahead of the construction. So although not as disruptive to the entire length as the first phase of Johnson Drive back in twenty fourteen with the stormwater interceptor, this still had some significant work there. So that is kind of how we ended up. We were at about seventy-five percent, sixty to seventy-five percent, complete on design. And getting ready to start into the right-of-way and easement acquisition process. So I want to pause there and just give you, Councilmember Chosey, kind of a chance to share with the group what you have shared with me and then kind of talk through any of those issues.
Yeah, so I think you all probably had the same experience I did, sitting down in small groups with Public Works to look at the sixty percent design. And and to be clear, this is a stretch of Johnson Drive that I think we all know is badly in need of maintenance and several other improvements, a lot of which are reflected in this plan and are extremely welcome improvements. I mean, the trees, the widened sidewalks, the the street furniture, I think is all stuff that's that's badly needed and long overdue for this stretch. The thing that just kept nagging at me in the days following that meeting that I had with Public Works were thinking about the commitments we've made to cities for all ages and abilities and and climate action and safe streets. I think we hadn't really stopped to challenge ourselves to think what, how could this be a different Johnson Drive? And how could this serve our needs and our goals and our land use plan better than it does now? Because I think a lot of the, for me, and this is based on a lot of reading and 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 learning, but admittedly, you know, amateur to to pseudo amateur at best, reading and learning of urban design and so on. A lot of the, a lot of the things that are not that appealing about this stretch of Johnson Drive, big empty parking lots and frontage of parcels that struggle with the form-based code and trying to balance that with addressing their commercial needs and success. It has to do with the fact that this is, this is a high-speed, four-lane divided right-of-way that is not very fun to walk on. It's not very fun to cycle on. You don't really want to spend any time anywhere near the the stretch of Johnson Drive outside of a car. And if anybody, you know, thinks I'm totally off the mark on that, let me know. But that that to me is not the city that we want. And it certainly doesn't help serve, you know, mode shift goals and and the idea of getting people out of cars and onto bikes and on foot and transit. So it it just really tugged at me, thinking about, you know, the reasons that I ran for office and I think largely was elected are 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 very relevant here, which are building a community that that is is going to thrive economically and also, you know, be a good steward of the planet and the resources we have. And be safe. I mean, I said, I I think a lot about, you know, high school students that are walking along this stretch and under that bridge with the sidewalk that looks like I wouldn't want to walk on it and I'm a pretty brave pedestrian, I think. To, you know, going to and from school and and cross-country runners and things, it's just, again, we, I think we've made some significant improvements here in this design. But I, and and to the credit of Public Works and the engineering team, I don't think, and you know, this is a big learning opportunity for me in terms of timing and process. I don't think we set out and 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 really said we want to challenge, you know, the status quo as much as we, I would have liked to have done if I was able to go back in time and do that at an earlier stage. But you know, I think the things that in particular I would would want to challenge is, you know, do we need this many lanes? Do we need this wide of a paved right-of-way? Can we slow the traffic down? Can we move the sidewalks away from the the road? And I brought a laundry list of things that I I would like to at least see investigated and and thought of to Laura and and, you know, she's been working, what seems to me, like, round the clock, trying to come up with a response to my wild laundry list of asks. But you know, through the meetings I've had with 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 Laura and the mayor, I'm I'm willing to 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 accept and understand that the the timing logistics of this project may be such that major changes aren't aren't feasible without really risking a lot of money that's on the table. For the reasons that Laura just outlined, the programs and the agencies involved and the deadlines are are tight. But whether or not we could make major or minor improvements to 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 this project, I want to have the conversation about, are we, you know, are we aligned at all on on some of the things that I'm concerned about here? And going forward, how do, you know, how do we improve the process to make sure that we're being clear about what we want to see? So that's the, I think, the the topic in a jar for me. Yeah, go ahead.
Aren't we going to slow down traffic and keep it twenty-five in that stretch? Or is that something that we've thought about? Or are we going to keep it four lanes?
I think it's being designed to thirty miles an hour. Right?
That's right.
Which is, is that, that's below the current posted speed limit? The same as the current posted speed? So yeah, so that is kind of what the, what the design has been.
Then my other question is, do we know if we're getting the federal funds? Sorry to be the one to ask, but.
And we have, we have continued and will continue to ask. I think the answer. Read this verbatim because it's, you know, I think Stephanie was in a meeting recently where they talked about from Mark feeling like funds that have been committed. So we have all these words when we talk about federal funding, what's committed, what's been obligated, what's and who knows where all of that lands in some of, some of this. The kind of most recent correspondence that I've had with the Mid-America Regional Council is that they have said that to the degree that they feel they have any confidence that they think it's doubtful that committed projects will be canceled. And so our project is committed. But they also have indicated that there is somewhat significant change that reimbursement approvals, which typically would go to the state agency and then be approved and reimbursed, that FHWA is now requiring those approvals to go to the state, then to DC, then back to the state. So I think we're still potentially have some concerns about mostly timing, probably of reimbursements. And so again, that factors just into kind of our cash flow situation and how how we can look at that. But I I think we're all still learning what that landscape is going to look like. I know the mayor serves on the Transportation Committee for National League of Cities and they had a meeting, virtual meeting recently, and I think there were is some cautions and things. I think we, I mean, in thinking about the things, kind of going back to Councilmember Chosey's point or or others, those things that we have valued may not be valued as criteria in projects going forward. And so I think the lesson that I learned and it was, it's been a good one. And I'm not, again, not, if we had any easy issues to solve tonight, I would have been grateful, but that is, you know, looking at and really having you all weigh in and react at sixty or seventy percent design is too late in the process. And so I have been churning a lot internally and we've been having a lot of internal conversations about how do, how are we better about that? And how do we really bring you all together? You know, for example, we talk about one of the implementation strategies and recommendations in the comprehensive plan was a complete streets policy. We've said we're supportive of that, but we haven't brought you a complete streets ordinance to really have you talk about those specific things that then allow us to communicate with our engineers and our designers that this is, these are the things that are our priorities. We need to be really, you know, kudos to staff, number one, for pursuing other people's dollars and securing those. The timing is tricky when you have, particularly on the large federal grants, that, that cycle of the call for projects. Sometimes we'll go through two different council election cycles. Councilmember Cream will remember, we turned back federal grant dollars a few years ago because of a change of, in philosophy. And so, you know, how do we try to balance that, particularly in a, in a city our size where a project like this, I mean, we're all in, right? And we don't have anything that we can shuffle or plug and play and do some of those kinds of things. So we need, we need to be, I think, more deliberate in, and sort of talking about those things. That may mean that we spend more on design. And so staff is not only very conscious of trying to go pursue other people's money, but to be very cost-effective in the dollars that we have. But we need to have those larger conversations with you all about what are the values and priorities? And then we need to tell you what that's going to cost instead of assuming that you want to do the lowest cost alternative that's available, right? We have to, we have to present you with more, I think, alternatives. So we have several things that are occurring, kind of, we had a bike ped study. We've started conversations internally about looking at and looking at that bike ped study alongside our capital improvement program and thinking about how we incorporate those recommendations when we're already touching streets. We have one of those examples that's part of the 2025 street program. Next week, you'll have an action item on your committee agenda to award the Safe Streets for All study. That's another big piece of this that I think comes together and helps us make better decisions about the streets and that community that we want to build. I think there will also be implications as we look at the zoning code updates and that process that, that has really kicked off. So we can certainly, yes, a laundry list, single-spaced, but very thoughtful, you know? And I appreciated your willingness to, to spend the time and effort and energy in sharing that and bringing that forward. And we can certainly try to address more specifically that and share that back with all of you. But wanted to, you know, have the opportunity before we get even further down the road to make sure we had a chance to talk about it publicly.
And just to be clear, I'm talking about. Thank you, Debbie. I'm, just to be clear, I'm, you know, I'm, I'm talking about things like, you know, can we shorten crossing distances for pedestrians? Can we, can we, you know, reduce curb radius for entrances into residential neighborhoods where you don't expect semi-trucks on a regular basis? You know, things that are going to make it more enjoyable and safe to walk and be outside of a car. And that, I mean, that's the question that I, that for this project, I wanted to, to at least rhetorically pose to my fellow council members is, when you look at Johnson Drive, this stretch of Johnson Drive today, and you think, what is this for? Is it for traffic flow? Is it for, you know, safety and ease and enjoyability of walking around and spending money at our businesses? Is it, you know, is, what is it for? And then ask yourself, is that what we want it to be for? Because I think a great deal of what it does right now is move people through our city and not do anything for us. And to some degree, we have an obligation to be part of the street network. But to another degree, I think we have an obligation to current and future residents and businesses to be the kind of place where everybody's going to thrive and not just, you know, blast cars through and put microplastics in our lungs and the whole, I could go on, but we need to wrap up. I think I saw Councilmember Cream.
Okay, let me give you an example of where we are really good about talking about things, but we don't do it. There's a drink place in my ward, in Brian and my ward, just north of Martway that's just going in. It has more concrete on that small footprint of land than half the businesses in Mission. Why would we allow, if we're looking at sustainable practices and drainage issues and things, why would we allow a building this size to have concrete this big? And I don't know where we weigh in on stuff like that. I saw that from the beginning. I kept thinking, why do we have all this concrete? It's, it, it's not drainage savvy. It, there's so many elements. And I go back to my pervious parking issue. We could have asked those developers that we're giving tax credits to, to put pervious. If they said no, there's negotiable points on that. But those are stormwater issues that we have some say over what we do with parking. And I don't think we always, we don't always convey that. And sometimes I, I know I sound frustrated and I get frustrated because I think we could have asked them to do that, especially if we're giving them some tax credit. So some of those things, sustainable-wise, it's great to look at the safe streets. It's great to look at things in place. I think we need to put our money where our mouth is on some of these issues and stand by them. And if we have an opportunity to do something more sustainable, not only for today, but the future for our kids and grandkids, we need to do that. And I may sound like a complainer. I'm not complaining. I'm observing that we are not taking advantage, to me, when developers come and ask for XYZ, what are we going back with that helps this community and the people that live here?
And I would agree. It has not been pervious pavement up to this point. I think there have been other building performance, sustainability issues. I think there have been attainable housing issues. I think there's been dedication of parkland. So again, that's not to say that we shouldn't ask for those things. But, you know, what, what are those shifting values and priorities? And how do we maintain that flexibility to look at what is, where are we and what we want and need today? And how does that project best give us, you know, where do we have some flexibility to negotiate what we might want to see?
Brian? I will second the comment on the, the drink location, which was not what I was originally going to say, but since you brought it up, yeah, it, I mean, that's a good example of, that's a facility that is, that is car-centric. It is a drive-through based business and it doesn't really jive with what we, we say we advocate for. But, you know, whatever, that, that one passed. But.
Yeah, don't let me read the vote back on.
I was going to say, one person sitting in the center of the day is who raised that issue at the time, in front of you.
What I did want to bring up, so I used to work in one of the buildings in that area of Johnson Drive that we're talking about, the Cox Automotive Building that's there. And I've walked that stretch trying to go to lunch. And I think if the question is, like, is it human-centric or is it vehicle-centric? I mean, I'll, we all know it's not human-centric at all right now. It's, it's not a pleasant experience to walk there. I absolutely would be in favor. And I think I asked about it during the smaller working sessions that we had. Why is this four-lane still? Why don't we bring it down? And I think at the time, if I recall, it's because we felt we needed to accommodate some of the larger delivery vehicles that serve the McDonald's, the grocery, the store that's there. And I get that to an extent. I will second, I think, Ben's comment. I'm not particularly interested in catering towards traffic that is just using our streets to get from point A to point B. I don't really care. Metcalf and Shawnee Mission Parkway will do that faster and more effectively. I am much more interested in how do our streets serve as a place to be for our own residents? And we'll always prefer a plan that, that accommodates that more than just moving traffic through.
Mary, did you have your hand up before? Okay, Leah?
When is our next Direction Finder survey?
We are slated and budgeted to do a Direction Finder survey this year. And in fact, we, I signed the agreement. Since it was a budgeted item and is now within my expenditure authority, we could go ahead and sign that agreement. And we're talking about schedules and actually pulling together. I've had some preliminary conversations with the mayor about how do we want to use it this year? What are, you know, so there are the standard sort of Direction Finder survey questions that we have. And so in fact, Justin and I were meeting yesterday, combing through the last two, 2021 and 2015 surveys and kind of looking at the trends and what are the things that we may want to think about asking the community about or, you know, for an opinion on as we go into 2025. And so I would imagine we'll be coming back to kind of facilitate that discussion and timing of that. Often we've done it in advance of the, a final decision on a budget so that you can factor those kinds of things into a budget decision. So we're trying to get that up and prop that up and keep it moving. I mean, I think there's some question about whether or not there would be anything coming out of the work on the zoning code updates that we might want to ask about if, if we look back. And again, we can share all these things out, but, you know, we asked a lot of questions about sustainability initiatives and some other things in the 2021 survey. So.
Do we ask businesses to complete that that are in Mission or just residents?
I believe when we looked at the map, that it did not appear that there were any specific businesses, at least along the Johnson Drive or Martway corridors. I, and it's one of the questions I had Justin ask back to ETC. I feel like I've heard them say it's not, I mean, they send it out and if a business responds, they would, would take that response. But that's something we've talked about as well as at some point, do we want to do, you know, another sort of business-focused survey that would be statistically valid in the same regard that this, this one is.
And are we planning to do any sort of marketing campaign previous to this? Just to get the word out so that we can get the most responses?
Yes, so that, that goes with, every time we do that, we will talk about, we'll promote, you watch for this and in the mail or however it happens, online kind of thing. So yes, we're getting those wheels turning.
I, I just think it, it'll be so interesting to see what the responses are because I think we really did take the last one and run with it in terms of, you know, putting significant amount of investment in our parks and really defining and promoting our streets plans. And, and so I'm super interested to see what people think about those and, and what their priorities will be this time. Because it just seems like it's been a lifetime since the last one.
I know.
So many things have changed.
Right.
I mean, both good and bad, and we've made a lot of improvements since then. And, and I would love, I mean, it'll be interesting to see what people, I mean, I, I think we should ask some specific questions about, you know, Johnson Drive and, and, and traffic. And because there are days I love the road diet and there are days I wish we'd have never done it. So go back and forth, trying to turn left.
Anybody else? Yeah, Councilmember Cream.
This deviates from this reconstruction project, but we have an opportunity. We have the Congress of Cities coming up in DC next month. And I'm not going this year, the first year in 2020, but you're going.
Yeah. We need, this, I was going.
We need, oh, Mary's going too?
Mary and Joseph.
We need, if possible, Laura, to put together some kind of a format. We're going to see Senator Moran.
Absolutely.
He's very supportive of Mission, has been a great advocate for this city. We need some point, like bullets of what we, he could help us with. He's been great in responding to us in the past. If that is something that you could put together for them.
Yeah, I think it's, it's taking, you know, we shared that list of the kind of all the federal funding projects. We've been going back and the mayor, if she's listening, she has been encouraging me to hurry up and get another round of that out to the congressional delegation. It, it has, I've been slow to get that done. But one of the things, we shared some of that information with Commissioner Fast, who reached out over the weekend as they were going to the NACO meetings and again, asked for, she heard the mayor talk about our Johnson Drive project in particular. So we shared some specific information with that. We're trying and we haven't been able to confirm it for a majority of the projects. But try, you may recall and said, you know, what the project is, what the amount of the grant funding. And I've added a status of funding. So where we have confirmed that we have it, I'm trying to add that so we know really then how to narrow those things that we really want to continue to advocate for. I will also share out, in my conversations with Mark earlier this week, they presented their board yesterday with a list of all of the grants that they have. And then another listing of all of the agencies, federal agencies who administer those grants. And then they created what they called a partner list. So it's, it's a laundry list of all the communities who have grants under those specific agencies. And I thought it was a really nice way to sort of look at where we might have some synergy or who we might be able to join forces with to advocate for different things. And again, that was out on their website this week, but I have the links to that and we can certainly share that out as well.
And I know the mayor's gone in the past and the mayor's not going this year. And she has really been an advocate for working with Sharice Davids on anything we've gotten and done a really good, solid job. So anything the mayor can think of that she may want Leah and Mary to take.
Absolutely.
Awesome.
Yes, I'll need a leash and some specific talking points.
Yes, we can do that.
You don't want me to go.
Is that a short leash or a long leash?
I was waiting to hear who that leash was going to be for.
It's me. And I, you know, I, I don't think it's a bad idea to maybe do something on social media, talking about how important these federal grants are to specific projects that we've already got going. Because I, I know just from looking at other social media and talking to people, there are definitely a lot of grassroots movements to contact our, you know, federal representatives to, to talk about.
And I think when.
How all of this is affecting us.
When we presented that list, I think Councilmember Carpenter Davis suggested we post that on the website. Again, I'm trying to get this list updated. It feels like something changes every day. At some point, we just have to get it out there. It's not going to be perfect and we're going to recognize that it continues to change and evolve, but.
Well, I think going to the lateness of the hour, any other comments on the Johnson Drive project?
Good job.
Yeah.
If you have something you could share with us, that would be great too, like specifics on what you would like to see.
Yeah.
I think Brian and I would be really interested in that's our ward. And getting some of the signage comparable to the rest of the city. We don't always get the flags and things like that down that side.
You're going to with this project. That will happen. All of those decorative poles will happen. So you will have flags, you will have banners, you will have, you know, a lot of those kinds of elements. But I think what I.
I'm sensitive to, to building consensus outside of the council chambers. So if you can maybe share some of that out, I can help you with that if you need, but.
No, I, I think, let, let me kind of take, we've got some of that pulled together. Let us finish pulling that together, confirm that maybe those were the high points.
I basically don't want to blast out a policy recommendation by email.
Yep, we can share that out. Thank you all for your time, attention. It's good to just hear and think and talk out loud sometimes, so appreciate that.
Okay, thanks, everyone. That concludes our work session.